I'd like to call a meeting to order, any items from the public.
And I'm here today to thank this commission for their diligence, past and present. The work that you guys do for Burkey County. So I'm here to thank you for the fire, for the fire department of Burkey County and the members and people of Burkey County for the job that you guys do. I've been coming for a little while and I'm realizing that it's not an easy job that you guys do because when you're being pulled in 10 or 20 different directions at the same time, so I know it's hard work. And I don't think I would want to be in a big bed actually have you guys position. So I'm really here to say thank you from me and I can say the fire department and the people of Burkey County in China. And I want to say Merry Christmas and bless you and your family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very kind words. Any, I'm sorry.
I want to have an item from the public that's directed to the sheriff. The other day, my wife bought a new car. We're traveling down the road, coming down to Peckham Hill there at Route 45, she gets lit up. No idea, she doing 45 miles an hour. So we pull into Blarton Road and the policeman's behind us and he comes up and said, our light, it was after dark, the lights aren't on. And he immediately proceeds to turn her lights on and, you know, brand new car, had no idea what was going on. And I want to say he was very kind and very professional. His name is Cobb and didn't even ask for our names. And thank, you know, thanked us for being cooperative, got in his car and left, but very professional and I appreciate it.
I think we've all been there.
Yeah.
Did you want to stand up and introduce yourself before you?
That was anonymous.
Maybe we should bring Lindy in and let her do it.
Items from the public. But I wanted to thank you for Cobb's professionalism.
Yes, sir.
Any other items from the public? If not, can I have a, oh. Come on up.
Can I keep it to share with the master?
Yeah.
He's going to tell you what this is. I completely forgot he asked me to do it.
Okay.
That's, that's okay. I just.
I'll make sure they get it. I'll get this back to you.
Do you need us?
No, I can't do that.
Need a, need a thumb drop? Yeah, okay.
So.
You're about to find out.
The, some of you have actually partaken in the events leading up to yesterday. Yesterday we had a high speed pursuit come from Maryland and enter into West Virginia. This specific individual had just recently stole a van and was purposefully and intentionally brake checking any of the officers that come up behind them, putting a grave risk at the officers and the public at high rates of speeds in triple digits. Once it entered into West Virginia, we subsequently picked it up and Deputy Cobb was the one directly behind the vehicle as well as Deputy Jones and Sergeant Ritchie. So, we're corporate, I'm sorry. So in this pursuit, in pursuits in general, we've been finding, I'm going to try to make this quick, we've been finding that statistically it is highly dangerous to deploy the higher deflation device. And it's almost so that out of 48 involved officer deaths, 36 of those was at the hand of the fellow officer actually that were hitting as they deployed a deflation device. This led us into the research of the, what we categorize as a public safety, public safety intervention technique. And what that involves is purposely making contact with a suspect vehicle and immobilizing the suspect vehicle immediately and then you pursue. There's been zero attributed deaths, officer involved deaths actually engaging this technique. Some of you arrived at the training center and are took into the actual doing this technique yourself and, and I think that that had garnered a lot of appreciation for the technique, that it is a technique. It's not, you know, a colliding of cars, if you will. It is a purposeful technique to end interference as safely as possible. As this pursuit went southbound on I-81, we had passed exit eight and Cobb eventually made contact with the vehicle and engaged in a pit maneuver. Pit maneuver immobilized the vehicle. The vehicle actually struck the guardrail and went across the road into the grassy shoulder whereas the vehicle, the vehicle was disabled and the person was extracted from the car and subsequently arrested for endangerment. But understand that this vehicle also, once you see the video, the rear end damage did not come from us. It was as a result of what the individual was doing in Washington County, brake checking the officers and the officers actually making contact with the vehicle. So when you watch this video, you'll see Deputy Cobb approached the left-hand rear quarter panel of the suspect vehicle, employed the, implement the public safety intervention technique and subsequently the vehicle reacted exactly the way those of you that were at the training center did. So it was a very successful pit maneuver. It ended the pursuit rather quickly. It was at a high rate of speed. So everything that could possibly have went right in terms of the implementation of our policy even for the very first effective pit maneuver went right yesterday.
How much traffic was on the interstate?
A lot. It was, it was, I was about left, it was 9:30 traffic roughly. So it wasn't the seven, eight morning traffic, but there was enough. It caused minimal delay on the interstate, I'd say an hour, but it was more along line than just. There was research involved with this. The deputies participated in it as far as Pennsylvania and Texas. We put it together, we put the policy together. We did the training. We've got certified instructors. We will continue to certify instructors in Texas and, and I would say this is a very successful outcome of a very hard-earned implementation into our policy to make public law safe. As you look at this PowerPoint that I put together, you will see the damage done on Deputy Cobb's vehicle is simply cosmetic scratches on the reinforced front bumper that we may have shot with some of these victims. There's no actual body damage to the vehicle. And that's it. I wanted to make sure you all knew that and I wanted to make sure that those of you that participated in it yesterday came to commission for what you saw.
I saw a lot of chatter, but just to mention, I haven't heard the recent traffic count on 81, but 10 years ago, it was over 80,000 vehicles that crossed between Maryland and Virginia on 81.
Eighty-four was the last one I heard.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four daily.
So that tells you how busy it could have been. Thank you, Sheriff.
And Sheriff, one of the really good things about that is the safety of the deputy. You know, he's in control of his vehicle when he does that maneuver and he's very safe and secure in his vehicle. So, you know, we certainly appreciate and support our deputies being safe and trained to do those maneuvers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other items from the public? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Motion to approve the agenda for December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda, purchase order log. Any questions for Tracy while she's here? No? No internal budget revisions? Mr. Lyon, is that right?
Good.
Okay. Change in status. We have a change in status received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Crystal Peterson. She is receiving a temporary increase for taking on additional duties. Her salary will go from fifty-three thousand, seven sixty-three to fifty-nine thousand, forty dollars effective December the first, two thousand and twenty-three. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Joshua Harmison. He is being promoted to corporal. His salary will go from sixty-five thousand, eight oh-two to seventy-one thousand, one fifteen effective October the first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is that from last week's action?
Yes.
Okay. And a letter of resignation received from Facilities for Holly Miller effective November the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And a letter of resignation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon effective December the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Approval of minutes, November the sixteenth, Berkeley County Commission meeting. Everyone was present, so we can leave them in. Bond reduction for Pebble Ridge, Section three E, lots twenty-seven through thirty-four, one thirty-seven through one forty-seven, one eighty-six through one ninety-four, two oh-one through two oh-seven, the final plat. File number is zero six three dash zero four tied to letter of credit number three fifty-nine. And that was a request of the Engineering Department. Any questions for Doug on that? Okay. And a fee waiver request for minor plan change for permit two three oh four dash three fifty, three fifty-three, C A P. It's the Civil War Patrol. They're putting a little addition on to park a van in on the side of their hangar out there at the airport. And they were looking for a fee waiver.
I have no problem with that.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Nothing from the assessor today? And we're already here, board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
I have nothing today, sir.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Boyd and I have nothing today.
Wow. This is going to be a quick meeting. How about Mr. Catley?
I do have something to say.
Okay.
Tuesday this week, we had a sewer board meeting. And the main topic there was the Woods Project, building a new membrane treatment plant. They opened the bids here recently. They had three bids and the low bid was accepted from Alvarez Construction for five million and five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
That's more than the water plant was.
Well, the next two bids, one was six and a half million and one was eight million. So they were hoping it was going to be around the four point five range, but.
Water plant was about three.
Yeah. As I've mentioned several weeks ago, they have sold ten million dollars worth of revenue bonds for this project. And the equipment that's going to be needed for this new plant is two point eight million dollars. So that brings the total for the power project at eight million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, roughly.
There's no money to be expended for sewer lines or anything like that?
Well.
Because the water lines are in terrible shape, so I don't know what sewer lines.
They're going to deal with that separately from the plant itself. This just involves the plant and, you know, so there's still money left over from the revenue bonds. The completion date for this, it needs to be done by December of two thousand and twenty-four next year. So they have a year to get this done. So that means they're going to hopefully be able to start construction this winter before, if the weather cooperates and they can get as much done as they can before spring.
Is this a complete rebuild or?
Yes. I don't know. I'm hearing, I think there's twelve hundred and some homes in there at this point in time. So it's obviously a system that is in bad shape and needs replaced. So also on Tuesday, we had a storm water board meeting as well. Curtis is working on the new fee structure that potentially could be put in place once we receive the permit, new code permit from the West Virginia D E P. So he's going to work on that in the meantime. And we do have some action down there on the permitting and hopefully we'll have that in hand by sometime in January. On last evening here in this room, we had our ambulance authority meeting. They have, we approved a purchase of four more ambulances last night. They have four that have already been paid for in full. And one is due in here April of next year. The other three is not due till November of two thousand and twenty-five. So they've committed to four other ambulances last night and two are remounts that hopefully they'll get here in November or sooner, possibly of next year. Well, actually, that could drag into two thousand and twenty-five as well. And they also are purchasing two new ones at three hundred and two thousand dollars apiece that could potentially be here sometime in two thousand and twenty-four. So it's like everything when it comes to vehicles right now, they're difficult to obtain. And you can imagine the complexity of an ambulance, how difficult this is. But, you know, the money's there and in place to purchase these and they're moving forward.
What was the purchase price of one?
On the ones that were, that are already paid for, they were two hundred and seventy-four thousand and nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars each. Two of these new ones are going to get from Northwestern are going to be at three oh-two. So.
First, first.
The remounts are a hundred and ninety-five thousand, so.
When I first got on the ambulance authority board and twenty-five years ago, purchase of an ambulance was less than a hundred thousand dollars. We were at about ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand.
I can believe that, yeah. Amazing.
Looking at it.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, you know, there's been a lot of staffing change there. Chad coming here with us was the chief. They've promoted within their own ranks several of those positions. The chief position is the last one to replace. And instead of going within, they're going to advertise through January the seventh and try to attract resumes from outside the organization to hopefully replace Chad at some point, sometime, hopefully by February or March at the latest. So, and I think that was the right decision to do that. So at this point, that's all that I have. Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. Development Authority, we had a subcommittee meeting on facilities. They opened bids on renovations of the four hundred building. They did receive three contracts and they'll be reviewed. The V A is currently occupied in that particular space. Also attended the sewer district meeting with Steve. The Union Gap subdivision has some sewer issues there that I was asked to speak with the Sewer Department to see if there's any help there in getting any of that resolved.
That's an old subdivision.
It is.
Forty-seven seventy.
They've got some, they've got some issues to work out with D E P and now with E P A. So they've got some, they've got some issues to work out there. Also, at planning commission meeting the other night, we only had two public hearings and it was a relatively short meeting, pretty much uneventful.
Okay.
I do have a concern about the situation that these folks are in. And I think it's our responsibility, and we look at the subdivision regulations and we're getting ready to approve new ones, is to not allow certain types of treatment plants that developers are building to even take place and be approved because it comes back in the long run and it affects these homeowners who invested their life savings into these homes when these systems break down and they're stuck with the problem.
I remember that subdivision and remember the sewer, Rick Hertz put that thing in.
Yep.
And it was somewhat experimental when it was put in and obviously hasn't worked well.
Well, to do this, they have to have the approval of the State Health Department.
Yeah.
But then once they get that, the permit actually comes from the West Virginia D E P. And then their follow-up on it. This particular situation, there hasn't been an active permit even in place at this time. So I just think it's something that we need to look at really hard and we consider what's going to be allowed in the future and try to deter this, you know, happening. So.
I don't think lagoon systems are permitted anymore in West Virginia, so that satisfies that problem. But I did not think that the Sewer Board was enticing to take over any kind of a package plant anymore.
Really not, but there's.
There's a couple.
They're the best person in the county to do it.
Yeah.
All right?
Oh, yeah.
So in lieu of having a group of homeowners trying to manage that system, if they can get the necessary permits, get the plant working properly, then it only makes good sense, I think, for the district to be able to manage it and report it and do all the testing.
Take care of it.
Do the testing.
Anything else?
It's a tough situation.
It is.
Yep, it is.
No, that's all I've got, sir.
I did not have any meetings for the county, so we'll move right along here. We had a board and commission vacancy, a reappointment packet received from Corey Rodriguez for the Board of Zoning Appeals. His term expires on December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Mr. Rodriguez to the Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And that brings us to our honorary county commissioner, Mr. Aiden Din. Okay, Eddie?
I am. Do you swear in firm? Do you swear in firm? That I will uphold the Constitution? That I will uphold the Constitution? Of the United States? Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia? And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia? That I will work hard? That I will work hard? To fulfill responsibilities? To fulfill the responsibilities? Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner? Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner? To wish I'd been appointed? To wish I'd been appointed? So have you got? So have you got? Congratulations. So my name is Aiden Din. I go to the St. Joseph School. I'm in eighth grade. I turned fourteen about two months ago. My hobbies are, I build model kits a lot and I make origami as well. Whenever I'm older, I really want to own a cafe so I could just cook for people and just give out food. Another hobby I'm in is karate. I do that every, like, three times a week. So that's a little bit about myself.
Very good. Now, if you have any questions or you want to have anything to say about what we're talking about, get ahold of H D Besager Penny and they'll get my attention and we'll forward the floor to you. So thank you for coming in and.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Sounds like you've got a pretty good plan ahead of you.
And I'd contact H D about the cafe business. He needs all the help he can get.
Yeah, he's, he's pretty renowned in that, in that category, so we'll leave it to H D to help you out there because you don't want me in a cafe unless I'm a customer.
Yeah, I say it's a customer. Or me because I have a history with.
All righty, next up, it's running right on schedule here. We have Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor, state accounts. Did I? Hold on a minute.
Pretty good.
They were. Did I get a motion for the consent agenda, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's all yours, Will. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have thirty-seven estates for final or interim settlements for the month of December of two thousand and twenty-three. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read-ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status to all relevant parties as prescribed by West Virginia law. To that end, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties of the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves or the estate has been declared insolvent by the personal representative, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, or creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration or approval of the thirty-seven estates for final or interim settlement in the month of December, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. You all have seen them for you in your read-ahead. Do you have any concerns or questions about them? If not, I'll take a motion to approve them as presented.
Mr. President, I'd move to accept the thirty-seven estates for final approval.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And no estate hearings to be scheduled, sir?
That is correct. I do have one little matter to clear up, and that is for the estate of Jane L. Taverner.
Go ahead.
Ms. Taverner passed away on January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, resident of Berkeley County. She passed away test date, meaning there was a will. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, Ms. Jamie Hill Esquire of the Law Office of Heatherdurn Myers qualified as personal representative for this estate as administratrix C T A, meaning she was not the named personal representative in the will. She was bonded accordingly for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents by the Western Surety Company of America. Ms. Hill has timely filed all relevant probate documents with this office and all remains, all that remains now is to distribute probate assets and settle these states with the county. Prior to qualifying, Ms. Hill forwarded the decedent's death certificate, a copy of the will, and the names and addresses of those named parties within the will. She forwarded that to one of my staffers. The date on the copy of the will submitted via email in March of two thousand and twenty-three was February fifth, two thousand and nineteen. However, upon qualification, and how this happened is not directly apparent to me. My office recorded a will for Ms. Taverner dated April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Both wills were identical in format as both were prepared by the Law Office of Heatherdurn Myers, but the beneficiaries were slightly different than that of the two thousand and nineteen will, the will that I'm proposing we record here this morning. As stated, I do not fully understand how this is possible and I, of course, take full responsibility for the matter. My office should have caught the difference between the copy of the will provided via email prior to qualification versus the actual will brought forward for probate. In any event, all names, all named beneficiaries in the original qualification documents are identical to those found in the two thousand and nineteen will I'm proposing here this morning, meaning there is no change in status for any beneficiaries of the two thousand and thirteen will versus the two thousand and nineteen will. We listed the two thousand and nineteen beneficiaries and we've been presuming that we recorded the two thousand and nineteen will. We did not. In any event, this morning, I aimed to correct this error and move forward with a proper will on public record. With that, I ask for this commission's consideration in probating the will of Jane L. Taverner dated February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, in solid form.
What's the difference between the two wills?
One has a residual, there are no differences in the residual beneficiaries, meaning all family members who get percentages, like, off the top are exactly the same. The differences are the charities identified. One names, off the top of my head, I'm not really too sure.
The library and the Adam Stevens home were.
Correct. And that's the one, the library and the Adam Stevens home have been, you know, given a copy of the two thousand and nineteen will, presuming that. you know, given a, given a copy of the 2019 will, presuming that's the one we recorded. It was not.
Okay.
I will, in preparation of this order, given the somewhat weird circumstances, I think I should probably drop something individually, so I'm going to work with Mr. Delagati's office on that one, so you won't have anything to sign there.
Okay.
There was no opposition outside this party?
None at all. The, it was actually brought to my attention by Ms. Hill, who was seeking to disperse the, well, the sale value of the real estate at issue. And of course, being diligent closing attorneys, the attorneys at issue looked at the will and said, well, those don't match. Who's, you know, the library and the Adam Stevens home, I don't see those in the 2013 will. And they were right, so we need to get that 2019 will up and running. That is the valid will. Now, of course, the reason we're doing this in solemn form is because Ms. Myers' office does not have the original, they only have the copy. It is not clear to me whether or not the, in typical circumstances where there are two wills provided, obviously, the latter will, if it's valid, is the one that's preferred. But it's unclear to me whether or not the original 2019 will was ever presented to my office. I think what happened was the 2013 original will was presented to my office by the personal representative and we just dropped the ball on checking, double-checking that will.
Will it all look true and correct when you receive it?
It's a valid will, to be sure. It's just a matter of getting the most recent one on, on record, for sure.
Okay, you've heard the request and we need to have a motion to proceed.
Probate, the will of Jane Taverner.
In solemn.
In solemn.
Okay, have the motion. Do we have a motion?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? Motion carries, sir.
Pretty much.
You don't need me to sign anything.
No, I'll have something prepared for your office later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Matt O'Meadle. Matt, come on up here and, about our new county flag.
Good morning, everyone. How are you all?
Good.
Good. We're just circling back after the November 2nd meeting. If you recall, we had a presentation at that time with the county flag design that was proposed, recommended by the committee, the steering committee of the Federation of Berkeley County. Following the feedback received from members, I took the design to a friend of the county and they did some tweaks. On the back wall is, is a representation of those tweaks that were made. Essentially, what was, was adjusted was the scale of this, the size of the county in the design. It's actually much more prominent, larger, consuming more of that white space that was discussed.
Robust is the word I'm looking for.
Robust. Thank you. Thank you. But I think it actually is an improvement. I don't know.
Missed a star on Hedgesville, but other than that, it looks.
Yeah.
We tried really hard.
I totally agree. Totally agree.
A star in the middle?
We tried really hard to get that star over the.
Yeah. Looks much better, I think.
Okay. I just wanted to note that the initial design was, was, was done by a James Drumsey Technical Institute student, graphic design student there. And if the commission would so wish, we would like to do a little presentation recognizing him and his work at a future meeting. At the, you know, scheduling, obviously.
How many flags do we need?
How many flags do we need? Well, I would suggest one.
Well, yeah, but you have to have replacements.
Oh, you mean, well.
Be draped in this building.
It'll be draped inside.
I mean, I think.
You're not going to have it outside anywhere?
That's your.
No, I'm just asking.
Right.
The intent and vision was interior to this building.
Just for context, the city of Martinsburg does, not that we follow other jurisdictions, but the city of Martinsburg does have a flag there in Town Square, I believe, that they do have mounted on one of the poles there in Town Square, I believe. And they may have a flag maybe outside their building. That's the only locations they have there, I believe. Not that we're.
Where would we hang the flag?
Open for you. We can get it purchased and you can let us know what you'd like.
Square Hedgesville, Steve?
No.
No. I, I think the, the atrium out here would be a beautiful spot for all three flags, frankly. I have one my personal opinion on it, the American flag, the West Virginia flag, and the county flag in the atrium hanging in the open air would look quite nice. It would give a little scale to the space and kind of dress it up really, it'd look nice with the green wreath we have there and everything. So to me, that would be a great location for what it's worth.
If any of the other county buildings would want one, can we offer that out there to them, too?
We can get past the approval and then obviously bring you.
Issue, okay.
People have inquired about purchasing one for their home, just FYI, I haven't received those.
Very good. All righty, can I have a motion to approve the Berkeley County flag as presented?
Sure.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All righty, we're going to take items from the public because we have an executive session to go into, and I do not believe we'll be coming out with any, any action to be taken. So if there's any items from the public, if not, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Sure.
Grab a second?
Second for economic.
For economic development, I'm sorry. Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
Got pictures to take.
Oh, yes, we do. We have pictures to take.[1026.32]
Okay, we're out of executive session and no action to be taken. Mr. Bernhardt, could you, uh?
Well, we have a, are we going into recess or, and then reopen? Is that where we go there?
Yeah.
Well, then I'll be in the recess so we can go.
Reconvene at the legislative summit?
Whatever.
301 Foxcroft Avenue.
And we get lunch.
All right. We are in recess until one.
And what we get for lunch, I knew they have fried chicken on there.
Oh, yeah?